Citizens and welcome to the 2nd May City Council Meeting. Tonight's invocation is going to be given by Jason Garcia with Celebration Church. Thank you, Jason.
Let's pray. Dear God, we want to thank you for everything you're doing in Fairhope so far. We pray over this meeting that we do our best to steward what you have given us, God. God, we pray for wisdom and insight over this meeting. Help us to make Fairhope the best that it can possibly be. We want to thank you in advance for the things that you're doing in our city and in our lives. We pray that you help us to make Fairhope a great place to live for our friends, our family, and our community. Thank you, God, for everything that you're doing in our lives and in Fairhope. In my prayer. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, council members, before we get started, I've got a couple of announcements. First, if you're here for zoning case 21.01, that is for Overland PUD, that is being rescheduled till the next council meeting, June 14th, 2021, 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. If you wish to speak to that today, you do have an opportunity at the end of the council meeting, at the second public participation, but that case is being postponed and, well, being reassigned to the June 14th, and you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time if you don't wish to sit through today's meeting. Next, I've got two items that I would like to have added to the council agenda, so we will need an amendment to the agenda. The first item is a nomination to add two appointments to the tree committee, and that would be Knox, McMurphy, and Mamoss, Parker, so I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda for that. And then also, I've got a resolution that I'd like to walk on for declaring an emergency to address a panel at the water treatment facility that was electric panel that needs some upgrading, and we discussed that some in the work session today, so.
Can I make one motion to add both?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to add both items to the agenda.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second to add those to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Okay. Thank you, councilman. First item is to approve the amendments of the May 10th, 2021 council meeting, the May 10th work session, and the May 10th agenda meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed. Motion carries. Next item, mayor, is your report.
Thank you. I just have a few things to talk about tonight. Obviously, everybody knows how busy we have been in Fairhope. Everybody can see all the drainage improvements that are going on and all the projects happening, so just wanted to report for those folks who did not tune into the work session that hopefully the Section Street Drainage Project will be complete by the end of the week with good weather. Thank you to Richard Johnson and his management of that program. We really appreciate that. And last week, we celebrated Public Works Week. I just wanted to mention that. Almost every aspect that, everything that we do in the city is touched by Public Works, whether it's streets and construction, sanitation, you know, our horticulture program. So I really appreciate all those gentlemen and ladies who take care of that department and specifically Richard Johnson, who is the head of that department. Thank you for what they do, and if you see them out and about, please be sure and thank them. Also, I wanted to let everybody know that the Nick Center will reopen on June 1st. Kim Rowland is here. Kim? In the back there, Kim was hired as the Senior Services Director, and I know she's anxious to get that center back open and start meeting all the senior citizens who come and utilize the Nick Center, so we'll be glad to have that back in full operation. Obviously, we're getting ready to celebrate Memorial Day, so I want to remind everybody that that will trigger, you know, the beach booth attendant there, so for Memorial Day, so remind everybody that we will start charging for you to get into the park. And also, just to let you know that we're starting to work on the budget. We had a director's meeting this morning and passed out the budget calendar, so we are asking for the first part of June for people to have their capital projects input and also personnel, you know, put in the budget, so we'll be working on that to hopefully get a budget passed timely this year. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Next, we've got public participation. This will pertain, we've got item number five is a public hearing, so this will pertain to any agenda items six through 23, including the two that were added. So if you're here to speak on agenda items six through 23, please step to the microphone, give your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Gary Gover. I live at 300 Lincoln Street in Fairhope. I'd like to make just a brief comment on item number seven, which is the long-term lease to FIF of some of the K-1 center property. The press packet didn't provide a great deal of background information on this agenda item. I think the public would benefit if during your deliberations you could bring up some of the information about what FIF's plan for the use of this property is over the 25-year period, and if possible, something about the strength of their commitment to stay with that plan for such a long period of time. I'm not sure that you can do this, but if you could, perhaps provide some comparison of how this use of the K-1 center property compares to the outcomes of the community engagement work that was done a couple of years ago to find out what the community thought would be a good idea for the use of this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. I expect we will have some good conversation about that item when it comes up. Thank you. Had my mic off a second ago. Anybody else, agenda items six through 23? All right. No one else, we'll go ahead and close the floor to public participation, and next item is council comments, beginning with Councilman Martin.
I don't have anything.
Councilman Robinson?
I don't have anything either.
Councilman B.
Actually, I do. I hope everyone has a nice, safe, and moral weekend, practices safe driving and good habits, good decision-making over that weekend.
A second.
And the second thing is, I hope everybody understands that these problems that you're going to run into with the city streets through the utility is for the betterment of the city of Fairhope, so keep your patience level pretty high when all the construction that is going to go on, and understand that it is for the betterment of Fairhope. That's it.
I'm glad you brought that up.
There will be some problems.
I'm glad you brought that up because that is progress. One comment I had was, well, two comments. One, congratulations to all the kids that are wrapping up the school year. I think our administration did an incredible job. Everyone I've talked to from out of town has not had the experience that we've had here in Fairhope for this school year, so a wonderful year in the face of a lot of adversity. And then the second thing I would like to mention is just congratulations to Diana Brewer, Coley Boone, and the rest of the South Alabama Land Trust Board. Bald Eagle Bash was fantastic this weekend. It's a great, great event for a great cause, preserving land here in South Alabama, and I just thought it was a wonderful event, and hope everyone had a chance to attend. With that, we'll move on to agenda item number five. This is a public hearing. This is an ordinance to approve an application from Coca-Cola Bottling Company United for a franchise agreement to operate beverage vending machines at locations specified in bid 6-21, Beverage Vending and Concessions 2021, a three-year commitment and is to the best interest of the public and the city of Fairhope to grant this franchise. Would someone introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
All right. Any discussion on this ordinance, or would you all like to just let it lay over until the next week?
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
I've never seen this, but how is this in the best interest of the public, the city of Fairhope, to grant this franchise? Can you explain to me why this is in the best interest of the city of Fairhope as opposed to the best interest of the Coca-Cola Bottling Company?
That must be legal jargon.
I don't have a lawyer there, but I would ask.
I've just never seen that, any franchise, anything I've ever seen. I just want to, well, it must be a purpose if it was in there.
They've won the contract.
Yeah.
And they bring all the product to the city versus, you know, K W baseball or football or whatever, having to go get the stuff, they stock it, and they provide coolers to the city.
So basically, nobody else was interested.
Yes.
And sometimes, best interests of Coca-Cola and the community can be the same, you know. It's not always.
Sometimes, it might be.
Not mutually exclusive, is that what you're saying?
That's exactly right.
Okay. All right. Is y'all good letting that one lay over?
You need to have the public hearing.
I'm sorry. Thank you for keeping me in line. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to this item now is your opportunity.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
My name is Gary Gover.
Wasn't expecting a comment.
This is deja vu.
I still live at 300 Lincoln Street. I better stop. The, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make about the franchise agreement. The recitals in the franchise agreement include a statement that the grantee requests that the city grant to the grantee a franchise to install, maintain, and operate this business on public property at the agreed-upon vending locations. Later in the agreement, the service area is described, and it says that the service area shall mean the geographical area within the city of Fairhope and specifically defined as follows: city vending machine locations. Now, it seems to me that those two statements are trying to describe something that's very much the same thing, but the descriptions are quite different. It seems to me that they should be more the same because it's going to introduce questions about what were the agreed-upon locations, or how do locations come to be agreed upon during the life of the franchise agreement versus the current location of city vending machines, wherever they are. It's not clear to me that those two descriptions are going to work if issues arise with this The other question that occurred to me was Coca-Cola Bottling has probably been doing this for a very long time. I don't remember anybody else doing, providing this same service here. And I'm not sure that this is maybe the best way for the city to obtain this type of service. It could be more competitive if, for example, the city chose to, rather than wait for someone to come forward with a request for a franchise agreement, to go out and request bids, do competitive procurement. That's just a thought.
I think bids were solicited and.
We did.
We have to do bids.
The franchise is part of the contract. The contract has already been awarded for the purchasing of the items, and this is for the vending machines. Like, there's one at City Hall, there's one at Police Department, there's a couple at the Rec Center, and all of those are what the franchise agreement is for.
Okay. Then the other thing that came up for me was, as a parent or custodian of participants in sports, particularly swimming in Fairhope, I read into the business of the parents and so on being asked to provide water or drinks or something to stock the concessions for activities that had to do with those particular sporting activities. And we were always told that the products that we contribute have to be Coca-Cola products. I was always a little concerned about that because I could go to the store and buy store brand products that were essentially the same for about half the price. So this franchise agreement, now maybe this doesn't apply to all the concessions, but the franchise agreement is explicitly not exclusive, and I began to have the feeling that maybe the people that are involved with the concessions for sporting activities didn't understand correctly the nature of the agreement with Coca-Cola for the city. I'm not sure that that's in the same scope, but that was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Appreciate that. Any other comments or anyone else wish to speak in this public hearing? All right, councilmen, are y'all good letting this item lay over until the next meeting? All right? All right, let that lay over. Or this time, close the public hearing and let that lay over. All right, item number six. This is an ordinance directing the transfer and declaring certain real property as surplus and not needed for public or municipal purposes. Located at the intersection of County Road 13 and County Road 32 improvement, track one containing approximately .21 acres, more or less, to Baldwin County, Alabama, to be used as part of the construction of a roundabout. It said intersection, which will serve a public purpose, allowing easier ingress and egress to the city's future sports fields and increase traffic safety at said intersection. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
All right. Item's been introduced. Any comments or discussion related to this? This is the roundabout at County Road 13 and 32, proposed roundabout, and we would basically be declaring some of that land surplus to allow this to be constructed. All right. Y'all good letting that item lay over?
I am.
All right. Let that item lay over. Next, item number seven. This is a resolution that Fairhope City Council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to prepare and sign a letter of intent for the Fairhope Educational Enrichment Foundation, also known as FIF, to lease a portion of the K-1 center property and buildings as contained within and specified in the attached Exhibit A, pages one and two. The lease will be a dollar per year for a term of 25 years. City Council hereby establishes and declares that the described property of the city, real property of the city of Fairhope, Alabama, is not needed for public or municipal purposes during this term of this lease. The city of Fairhope will provide insurance for the property. FIF is not allowed to sublet any portion of the property and will be responsible for maintenance. FIF will be responsible for improvements to building conditions, the building improvements and educational opportunity constitute a valid public purpose for the city, the specific terms and conditions of which will be detailed in the lease agreement to be completed by August 1st, 2021. Councilmembers, I think this is an opportunity. Corey, you mentioned you wanted to speak to this item, so please, open up.
Yeah, well, you know, I've had some conversation with the president. I think Stephen is here today on FIF as far as, and Gary had some questions as far as the details of what's being done here. I think this is a great opportunity. You know, FIF is investing their money to upgrade this particular facilities, these buildings in this area. The first phase would be renovation of the Pelican's Nest for our kids and our estuary and them learning about the bay. I'm a parent. I've gone through three of those, and I think it's a beautiful thing as far as the learning opportunities for our kids about our bay and all the organisms that reside in our bay. So that's number one. As far as the engagement of the community, these facilities are going to be maintained by FIF, but they're not hoarding them. As far as community engagement, it does follow with the community engagement, and as far as my due diligence is concerned, FIF will allow business meetings, et cetera, as far as innovation, but these rooms will also be used for STEAM, to answer your question, Gary, for STEAM participation and classroom participation with our kids in the community and adults as well. As far as wraparound approach is concerned, these buildings will provide that wraparound approach with engineers and other aspects of STEAM in our community for our kids to learn in these classrooms. We also have an outside classroom there for the kids and STEAM participation. So the community, this is all about community, and in my opinion, I don't think, I think it'll only get better in 25 years, so, you know, so the 25-year doesn't bother me at all. I think it just gives time for us to grow into what we're destined to be as far as our children are concerned.
To speak real quick to the members of the public that are watching or here, this property being proposed for lease, if you don't have access to this Exhibit A that shows the outline of the proposed leased area, it basically encompasses the four buildings at the front that are currently being proposed as a STEAM center, as well as the existing Pelican's Nest, and then there's a space kind of connecting those two parcels that would be potentially used for an outdoor classroom. I think that the community has been a big supporter of FIF, and I think that this was something that was brought forth in the public participation. Gary, I believe that they wanted to see this property continue to be used for some education component, and this would be an educational enrichment opportunity for Fairhope, and I think that in order for FIF to spend the kind of money that I believe it will take to bring this property to the state that they would like it to be in, they need a guarantee that they're going to have more than just two or three years at a time. However, I would like to see, mayor, when you're negotiating the final detail or the final items of the lease, I would like to have something in here that states, you know, if it's not being, if it's not being used for, you know, the intended purposes, it would revert back to the city. I wouldn't want FIF with good intentions to take on this lease and then, for whatever reason, get in a possible situation where the property just sat dormant for 10 or 15 years with no other use. So I think we just need to have some kind of a reversion clause that if, for whatever reason, FIF decides to abandon or pause on the mission, that the property would come back to the city of Fairhope. But I think outside of that, I would love to see the city support FIF, do a lot of great things for our students, and I think all of us in the room who've had children go through the Pelican's Nest or anything else know that that's a special, special opportunity, so. Any comments? Councilman Robinson?
No, I think you guys addressed it. I mean, I think this is a great plan and a great idea, and I do concur, Jimmy, that something in the lease that allows to revert back to the city control in the event that FIF decides that, you know, their interests don't align any longer, I think is a smart idea.
Yeah, and we did talk about that. I don't know. Yeah, so it's, I think we, yeah.
All right, well, at this time, and mayor, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add or not. All right. This time, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right. We got a motion. We have a second. All right, you got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, ayes. Motion carries. And moving forward to item number eight. Item number eight is a resolution to authorize the submission of a fiscal year 2022 TAP Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program Grant. So that's a TAP grant to Alabama Department of Transportation to construct new sidewalk facilities along Fairwood Boulevard and Blue Island. Total project cost is estimated to be approximately $800,000, and the city will be responsible for providing 20% match or $160,000 of that money. Richard, anything we need to know about the TAP grant?
This is Daniel Call. This was actually a grant that we went for last year and didn't get, so we're trying to get it here.
All right.
We'll have good news.
Any concern about the cost of concrete and being able to stay within that projection?
Well, the number from last year is a little higher. Go ahead and check your space there.
All right, my memory's not that good, but I trust that you're definitely presenting a higher number now, so. Would anyone like to, I'd like to entertain a motion if anyone would like to move forward on that.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, none opposed. Motion carries. Move on to item number nine. This is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute Amendment Number One to the RSA Agreement for Twin Beach Road dated January 28th, 2020 between the city of Fairhope and the teachers' retirement system of Alabama and employees' retirement system of Alabama. And this contract, I believe, is going to be extending that timeframe to March 30th, And mayor, did you, or Marcus, did you have anything to add to that?
I'm sorry to approve unless you just want to mention.
Yep.
I'm making a motion to approve.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Item number 10. This is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to enter into a four-month rental agreement with Eastern Shore Parents Aquatic Foundation, ESPAF, doing business as SWAT, S-W-A-T, for certain limited use of the city's municipal pool facility. The limited use shall be for three contiguous swim lanes from 3:30 PM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, beginning May 25th, 2021, and that's again for four months, so May 25th through September. The monthly rental fee shall be $900, and each swimmer shall also have a Fairhope Municipal Pool membership. ESPAF shall name the city as an additional insured on its policy and execute a hold harmless indemnity agreement with the city. Any and all recreation department activities shall take priority over any ESPAF use of the facility. The recreation department shall endeavor to provide 48-hour notice to, I guess, do we call it ESPAF, to ESPAF of any potential use conflict. Does anybody have any questions for Pat? Are y'all?
Councilman Conyers, I can address this.
Okay.
This was already approved by the city council. This agreement was, and we are just changing the terms of it based on the fact that we are getting into the summer season and that we think that the pool traffic is going to be a whole lot greater than what it was in the past, so we're limiting that to three lanes. It did give me the option of negotiating terms of that contract, but it did have to come back before the city council, so the gentleman in charge of this program is aware of it and has agreed to the terms, and we went ahead and did it for till September instead of doing it month by month, just so we wouldn't have to come back before the council.
Okay. This time, I entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Move on to item number 11. This is a resolution, be it resolved, that the governing body of the city of Fairhope, Alabama, that the city council approves the selection of SE Civil LLC to perform professional engineering services for water main replacement at State Road 181 along the right-of-way to County Road 34 for the Water Department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. That's where I heard County Road 34. I knew it. Read that somewhere. All right. Any questions for Jason on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, you got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. None opposed. Motion carries. Next item 12. This is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of LEAB Engineering Company to perform professional engineering services for design and construction administration for additional ball fields and parking for the recreation department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. Actually, I had three or four people at Bald Eagle Bash bring this very topic up to me, so very well timed to have this on the agenda tonight. Any questions for Pat on this? I also saw Chris in the audience somewhere there. I also saw Chris in the audience somewhere there.
Other than we are super excited to see progress on this and get things moving in the right direction.
So, is that a motion for?
Based on these more kids, I think we can all agree we need a more position.
Correct, correct. So, I make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, you got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item number 13. Resolution to the City Council approves the selection of Encompass 360 to perform professional services to conduct FEMA HMGP grant application, program management, and grant administration for a FEMA rate first responder safe room, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a contract with a total cost of $60,000, which is an unbudgeted item. I guess, Jessica, did you have anything you could bring to us on this?
You'll remember that Mr. Culpepper from Encompass 360 was with us for the April 26 work session. This is for the application development and submittal for that HMGP grant. It requires quite a bit of extensive engineering and design work between now and the deadline of mid-July, so it is definitely imperative that we address this tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, the only question I have, if approved for the grant of the $60,000 expense, would that be a 75-25 match?
Yes.
Okay, so 45 of that would be reimbursed?
Correct.
Okay.
We pay him 30 up front.
Yep. So, the 30 up front would be the only thing at risk if we didn't receive the grant?
Right, would be at risk if we did not receive the grant.
That's correct.
All right. Any questions for Jessica or the mayor on that? All right, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, you got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? None, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. None opposed, motion carries. Ooh, this one's a mouthful. All right. Item number 14 is a resolution awarding RFP PS001-21 Fairhope Area Community-Based Comprehensive Land Use Plan Contract for the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Grant, S1P17-FACP. This is part of the Restore Act and, let's see, the resolution. Whereas the City of Fairhope was awarded a Restore Act Direct Component Subrecipient Grant, S1P17-FACP, from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources on April 16, 2020, and whereas the city did solicit request for proposal, RFP PS001-21, in accordance with applicable federal, state, and local laws, codes, regulations, ordinances, et cetera, including but not limited to all executive orders, Office of Management and Budget requirements, and U.S. Treasury regulations, and whereas the city did receive and evaluate proposals from qualified firms for said services, and the city's evaluation committee determined Neil Schaefer to be the most qualified firm and recommends that this firm be selected for said services. And whereas the amount obligated to the Fairhope Area Community-Based Comprehensive Land Use Plan of subrecipient grant by the U.S. Department of Treasury is $526,500, and whereas 100% of the Fairhope Area Community-Based Comprehensive Land Use Plan fees will be paid for with grant funds made available through the subrecipient grant, S1P7-FACP with ADCNR. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Fairhope in regular session assembled that this resolution, the City of Fairhope awards the contract for the Fairhope Area Community-Based Comprehensive Land Use Plan, RFP PS001-21, for ADCNR grant, S1P7-FACP, to Neil Schaefer, subject to review and approval by ADCNR and the city attorney prior to execution. I don't know that I had to read all that, but, okay. Any questions or conversations on this? This is, again, Jessica, this is the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and this is Neil Schaefer would be receiving this grant, would be receiving this contract for $526,000, and this is all Restore Act money. So, we've been working on this for a while, trying to get it out there. Yes, ma'am.
Just real quick, by awarding this tonight, we will finally have all of our current restore projects under contract. That's a really big deal. You should give yourselves a hand. It's been a long time coming, and I think next time we develop projects, which is probably going to be next week, we will make sure that those names are a little bit shorter. That's a lot.
That was a mouthful right there.
Any questions about this one?
No, thank you for helping get all these projects moved forward, standing on top of them. Any questions for Jessica?
I'll make a motion to approve, item number 14.
All right, you got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed, motion carries. Item number 15. This is a resolution, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that Mayor Sherry Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a change order number one to bid number 010-20 on the Church Street Utility and Drainage Improvements for replacement of 482 linear feet of existing gas main and nine gas services with an increased cost in an amount of $32,746, and award the change order to Asphalt Services, Inc. Any questions for Terry on this one? This is something he spoke about briefly during work session.
Terry, you want to, you want to just say a little bit why we're having a change order so the public can understand?
Yes, sir. Sure. So, there's an old main going down a little alleyway between the pet store, and there's a huge oak tree and a retaining wall there with the electric box sitting on it. That old main, probably before I was born, comes from Church Street and goes across, and some of them actually go underneath these buildings that feed services. The main is exposed, it's been pushed up, that oak tree actually has it pushed up out of the ground, so it's on top of the ground. So, once we dig up Church Street, we need to replace that line, and the only way we can replace it is coming back from Summit and not attaching back to Church Street because of the tree and the electric boxes there. And again, the services are all steel, they need to be upgraded, so we figured this is the greatest time to get that main out of there before the tree gets too much bigger.
Yeah, agreed, and I assume unfortunately we will probably run into additional items like this as we continue to upgrade some infrastructure? Or is this a unique?
You know, I don't, we hope not. You know, we know this was there, and we know we got to dig up Church Street, and there's no sense in tapping that back to the new main, and when you got a line that's exposed like that. That's the only one we know of that's exposed.
Okay, good. All right. Anybody on council got any questions for Terry? Signs up? All right, well, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank y'all.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, none opposed. Item number 16. This is a resolution, let's see, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, as follows, that the City of Fairhope did request receive an open bid for installation of a Cigna UV at Treatment Plant for the Sewer Department, bid number 19-21. And number two, at the appointed time and place, the following bids were opened and tabulated as follows, and you can see the attached bid tabulations. Number three, after evaluating bid proposals with the required bid specifications, Robert J. Baggett, Inc., with a total bid proposal of $182,221, is now awarded the bid for installation of a Cigna UV at the Treatment Plant for the Sewer Department. And this is a budgeted item, and it's coming under budget, about $50,000? I'm reading that correctly, Jason, so good job. Does anyone have any questions for Jason on this?
I make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed, motion carries. On to item number 17. This is a resolution to award the bid for ready-mixed concrete for the city, bid number 25-21, to Ready Mix USA LLC with the total bid proposal for the unit amount shown in the attached bid tabulation. And I believe Richard spoke about this, actually at our last council meeting, just needed to have somebody who's sort of the approved concrete provider for the city, if that's correct. All right. Anybody have questions for Richard? All right.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? All right, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number 18. Be it resolved that the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that the City of Fairhope has voted to purchase overpressure protection, OPP, and Emerson's Zetti Cloud Skater Solution for Gas Utilities Monitoring, 11 sites, including the Gate Station sites, for the gas department from John H. Carter Company or its subsidiary Control Works LLC, a sole-source distributor in the Southern Third of Alabama, and authorizes procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed in the Code of Alabama, 1975, Section 41-16-5113. The cost will be $27,283.45, 21, 823.45 in equipment, and then $455 per month for the 11 sites. So, this would be, Terry, if you wouldn't mind speaking to this, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. So, we have these sites, and they're, they're just, the gate station is where we get our readings from how much gas, and we just use that as a test meter compared to what BP and Gulf South sells us. That's a test station. It's where every bit of our gas goes through that station, so we need to monitor that. At that same point is where we inject our odorant. We cannot tell how much odorant we got injected unless we drive all the way up there for an hour, it takes us five minutes to download it and all the way back. Every time it's light and storm, we have to drive up there to get this reading and reset it. This'll be all automatic, come to our phone, let us know if anything's wrong, how much is going through it, and that's on the odorant part, and that's something we really need to keep up with, because it has to be so many parts per million to keep the gas legal for the odorant. The other stations are our pressure recording stations, like different areas, where there's a dead-end road, or where there's a big area where it goes into the main subdivision, and that's our regulator stations that need to be monitored there to tell us whether it's a leak, whether, if somebody's cut a line, we can see that instantly on our telephones. As of right now, we have to drive to each one of them. These machines are 20 years old, and they're out of date. You can't even download them anymore. So, the Public Service Commission says that we have to have them readings every other month, for sure, and so we just, we have to have a way to collect that information. And this skater holds that information forever, and they're clouds, so we can always go back and find past information if we need it.
Okay, so $27,000 and some changes was a budgeted item, $30,000 was a budget, so it's about $2,700 under budget, but it also sounds like we'd be picking up quite a bit of efficiencies by upgrading to this. So, does anybody have any questions for Terry? All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Terry. Appreciate that. All right, moving on, item number 19. Resolution, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that the City of Fairhope has voted to purchase 40 LED lights to upgrade lighting on US 98 Greeno Road from State Highway 104 to Parker Road for the Electric Department from Gresco, and authorizes procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama, 1975, Section 41-16-51B7. Cost will be $49,000, and it was budgeted at $50,000, and Jeremy discussed this in the work session during the agenda meeting. Anybody have any questions for Jeremy? No? All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? None? All right. In case, all those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Let's see, item number 20, and this is also a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to procure one train Odyssey Split System Air Conditioning Unit for the James P. Nick Center, and equipment is available for direct procurement through the co-op contract through U.S. Communities, USC 15-JLP-023, and other vendors for installation. The total unbudgeted not-to-exceed cost is $12,500. Paige came up and spoke to this earlier. We've already replaced a couple of the AC, the more expensive AC units for this location at the Nick Center, and this would be to keep the front of the building comfortable. And they're opening in a week, so we want to do what we can to make them comfortable. Does anybody have any questions for Paige on this? None? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed, motion carries. Item number 21. This is a request to appoint Morgan Slay as a Parking Authority nominee. I think everyone's got the application for Morgan in here. Who is the Parking Authority representative? All right, I assume everybody's on board with Morgan?
Jack.
Hey, Jack.
Yeah, he's not here.
Thank you. Good point. Well, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. I will say that Morgan's daughter was cleaning up in the elementary school awards day today, so good job. I know he's proud of her. Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed, motion carries. Item number 22. This is one y'all approved to walk on. This is some nominations to the Tree Committee. So, I've got a request for two appointments to the Tree Committee, and those appointments are Knox McMurphy and May Moss Parker, and y'all should have received, should have received a printout on this at the beginning of the meeting. So, Tree Committee, who is that? Is that Jay?
It was Jay last term.
It's Cory now.
Cory.
It's me. I'm on the Christmas Tree Committee.
Okay, all right.
You're on board with this?
It's a Christmas parade committee, not a Christmas Tree Committee.
All right. Well, okay, I'll take it, yes. Do I have a motion to appoint Knox McMurphy?
So moved.
May Moss Parker. All right, you got a motion and a second.
Yeah, May Moss is good people.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed, motion carries. Let's see. Next item, this will be item number 23, I guess. This is a resolution, this is from Jason, but, "Resolution Declaring an Emergency Whereas the City of Fairhope's Wastewater Treatment Plant Building Needs Immediate Attention Due to an Electric Panel Needing to be Replaced and Moved Due to the Panel Overheating and Jeopardizing the Power to Part of the Building and the Testing Lab. And Whereas There Is a Need for the City to Hire Certified Electrician to Assess the Panel Damage and Determine What Measures to Take for Making Emergency Repairs to This Critical Public Facility and Provide Adequately for Health, Safety, and Convenience of Employees Without Delay. And Whereas the City Council Due to the Emergency Circumstances Requiring Immediate Action to Avoid Further Damage to Property, the City of Fairhope's Wastewater Treatment Plant Building is Desirous of Declaring an Emergency Pursuant of Code Alabama, Code of Alabama, 1975, Section 39-2-2E, so that Immediate Repairs May be Contracted to Avoid Additional Damages to the Building Via Soliciting Informal Bids for Repairs. Now Therefore, be it resolved that the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, while in Regular Session on May 24, 2021, as follows, the City Council of the City of Fairhope hereby officially declares an emergency as an electric panel needing to be replaced and moved due to the panel overheating jeopardizing the power to part of the building and testing the testing lab, the City of Fairhope's Wastewater Treatment Plant Building authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to hire a certified electrician to assess the damage and appropriate money not to exceed $25,000, determine what measures to take for making emergency repairs to this critical public facility." Just to recap, basically, we would either had to walk this on, or we would have to have a special call meeting to address this. It is critical, but you have to have three bids, even though this is a critical item. We had one bid already in hand, and rather than having Jason go out and get other bids and then hold a special call meeting, we're just proposing to set a not-to-exceed limit of $25,000 to allow them to move forward on this. So, everybody understands? Do we have any questions?
Just to make sure they're informal quotes.
Yeah, informal quotes, yes. Thank you for keeping me straight. Thank you for keeping me straight. Uh, any questions for Jason on this? He already covered it in the work session.
Let's get it done.
All right, in that case, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Nobody? Nope? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed. Motion carries. And at this time, we, we do have, um, we do have a request for going into an executive session, but before that, we're gonna...
Public comment.
Yeah, before that, we're gonna, we're gonna hold public participation. So at this time, uh, public participation's open. You got three minutes to discuss anything you wish to bring before the council. All right, Gary, nothing else?